Yeah, yeah. Put that on the jet. Make yourself a note, write yourself a note. All right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, February 28th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh, God, our Father, when we arrive at important decisions, we turn our focus to you, seeking for wisdom and guidance. Father, tonight is no different. We pray for wisdom and knowledge and guidance as this community continues to grow and develop. Father, we pray for safety for our families and for our children. We pray for great opportunities for personal growth and intellectual growth and economic growth. Father, we pray for this community. We thank you for those who are committed to serving us and protecting us. So, Father, we come to you again, say thank you for how you've blessed us, seeking more of those blessings to make this a great community. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Andy Silvesterwitz? Would you lead us in a pledge, please, tonight?
To lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilman Spann? Councilman Hardaway? Councilwoman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak?
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Here.
Councilwoman White?
Here.
President Bella?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Our first item tonight is the Women's History Month proclamation, and it's going to be presented tonight by Lori Cagle. Lori Harvey Cagle is an award-winning former journalist with more than 30 years of experience in helping to tell stories of our region. Lori serves as Communications and Media Relations Specialist for Franciscan Alliance Northern Division. In that role, Lori manages media relations for the Franciscan Alliance healthcare system across Northwest Indiana and Chicago's south suburbs. Her current position follows six years of service as Communications Director for the environmental consulting firm of Legacy Environmental Services in St. John and the two statewide nonprofits it manages, Drive Clean Indiana and Wisconsin Clean Cities. In that role, Lori managed all aspects of external communications for all three organizations and several of their clients and partners. In her capacity with Drive Clean Indiana, formerly South Shore Clean Cities, Lori managed air quality communications and campaigns across Lake Porter and La Porte Counties for the Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, NERC, including those for Northwest Indiana Partners for Clean Air and the weekly Green Fleet Radio Show on Lakeshore Public Radio. Lori's corporate and non-portfolio communications and media relations work follow her to more than 25 years of storytelling as a professional journalist in Northwest Indiana and Chicago's south suburbs, including more than 21 years with The Times of Northwest Indiana. Her reporting on a variety of topics earned multiple awards at the local, state, and national levels, many of which were for her reporting on the environmental beat. A proud native of Park Forest, Illinois, Lori holds a BS in Communications from Bradley University in Peoria, Illinois. She currently resides in Crown Point with her husband Kurt and son Jack. She is a baseball history buff and loyal White Sox fan. For much of the year, her free time is happily spent traveling with her sons' baseball teams and watching his games. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Lori Cagle.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Town of Maryville Proclamation, State of Indiana. The Town Council of Maryville Designating the Month of March as Women's History Month. Whereas, the National Women's History Alliance, which spearheaded the movement for March being declared National Women's History Month, has announced the Women's History theme for 2023, celebrating women who tell our stories. Throughout 2023, the NWHA will encourage the recognition of women past and present who have been active, excuse me, in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, and more. The timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, producing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. Women have long been instrumental in passing on our heritage in word and in print to communicate lessons of those who came before us. Women's stories and the larger human story expand our understanding and strengthen our connections to each other. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas, American women, excuse me, are they so touched by what you read? Excuse me. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, you're so sweet, thank you. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and more importantly, Maryville. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, we are honored to have women serve in public office at the national, state, local, and Town of Maryville level. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, does hereby proclaim that the month of March 2023 is designated as Women's History Month and call upon the residents of Maryville to observe, discuss, and educate others with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and other activities about the value and contributions that women have made to our nation and more, specifically, the Town of Maryville. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Minchuck?
I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation. I also would like to thank Ms. Cagle for reading it and thank you for your dedication.
I will second that motion.
Marge, second.
Oh, thank you.
We have a motion, Mr. Minchuck, second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of the proclamation as presented by Lori Cagle. Nice job. Thank you very much, Lori. All in favor? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to the roadway grant agreement approval. Mr. Reardon? Any other details on this?
No, sir. We talked about this at the RDC meeting. I just want to, I just want to be sure, are we, I think we're, I apologize. What you have in your packet is a road easement agreement.
Right.
Yeah. This has to do with Misner Group. I'll, at this point, ask Sheila Shine to elaborate. We've been working on this particularly, Sheila and her staff, for several months. Sheila?
So, this is the first part of the road easement agreement. The first part of the agreement is for the council to say that they are approved. The second part, it would have to be advertised and ordinance has to be written. Robinson Engineer has reviewed it and been through it, and right now, we're just asking the council to approve this easement for the Misner Group out on East 93rd Avenue. It is a road frontage easement. We've been going back and forth with Glenn Bourne from DVG for some time regarding this easement.
Mr. President, this is obviously in my ward. It's on the south side of 93rd Avenue. If you're familiar with that stretch, there is a strip center that has a parking lot, and it has a stub of a frontage road, and then you go down to vacant land, and the next cut is Connecticut. And the council, keep in mind, 93rd Avenue Phase 1 was paid with federal money, and we can only allow cuts that were already there. So, they, anyone that develops that 11 acres to the east needs to tie into this, and we own the property because the drainage for 93rd Avenue Phase 1 goes in back of the strip center and in back of the ACE Hardware. So, this is actually on our property that we're allowing them to go on top of, right, Sheila?
Yes.
And it's an access easement.
It's an access easement, right.
So, I've reviewed it, the engineering's reviewed it, so at this time, it's in true and proper form. So, at this time, I encourage the Town Council to go ahead and approve this access easement.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of the road easement for East 93rd Avenue. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
This is for Mr. Shine here. What was the price on that one, again?
There's no price.
No price.
It's a grant?
Granting an easement.
Granting an easement for them to go over the top of our property.
Got it.
Any other questions? Here, if you know, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the announcement of the town's pursuit of block grant opportunity. Mr. Reardon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to inform the Town Council and the citizens of Maryville that we've been notified by Lake County Economic Development Department that the Town of Maryville is a recipient of approximately $147,448 as its 23-24 allocation from block grant revenues. We will have a, or staff, pardon me, staff suggests, recommends that we hold a public hearing to further elaborate on this grant, how the grant can be used, and we would like to see that public hearing held two weeks from this evening, sir.
Very good. So, at our March 14th Town Council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. We'll schedule that. Thank you, Pat.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, this is for Pat. In the terms of the block grant, have we already targeted what we're going to do with those dollars?
Great question, Councilman. The answer is no. That's, that's really the primary reason for this public hearing. You know, in the past, the town has targeted dilapidated structures. We have utilized these dollars to bridge financial gaps for road projects. And so, again, to answer your question, no. It's, it's pretty much wide open at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, Rich, when did we do the handicap curb cuts in the neighborhoods? We used CDBG money for that a while back, didn't we?
Yeah, we've done it in two different places.
Two different, that's what I thought.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Council, I did receive a letter from Mr. Reardon today. It's in response to the recommendation for the municipal recycling and waste contract. It says, as you may recall, our exiting contract with Waste Management of Indiana, LLC, sunsets on Friday, March 31st, 2023. It is our opinion that the town continues with waste management by opting into our option year three, which would be April 1st, 2023, through March 31 of 2024, and option four, which is April 1st, '24, through March 31st of 2025, effectively agreeing to a two-year contract extension. You may recall that our contract, the way it states, is extended in two-year increments. While this recommendation represents a modest annual cost increase of 3% from $21.95 per month to $22.61 per month, and a 3.4% increase in the following year, it does provide for continuity of service plus immediate access to waste management officials. Additionally, we will continue to benefit from Waste Management's annual marketing grant of $17,000, which all of you know helps pay for the town newsletter. What I'd like to do is call for a council workshop on March 7th at 4:30 PM, executive session, to talk about this as a contract with Attorney Svetnov, so we can vote on it at our next meeting on the 14th.
What time was that, Mr. President?
4:30.
What date is that?
Tuesday.
It's before the poll.
Yeah, before your blank.
Next Tuesday?
The 7th, March 7th, at 4:30, next Tuesday. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for February 28th, as well as the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes from February 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzalak with a second by Mr. Hardaway. Questions, comments? I have one, actually. For Madam Clerk Treasurer, it's page two, toward the bottom, six items up, 1,600 payroll fund. It says ARP bonuses, $2,023.32 for town hall ARP bonuses.
Where is that?
It's on the registers.
Oh, yeah, on the register.
We're on the claims list now. Every time I see the word bonus now, I get a little nervous.
Because my question was, who was the bonus for?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Because it wasn't approved by the ARP.
Can you bring me that? There's 1,600. This one.
Sometimes it's hard because everything's abbreviated so much.
Right.
It's hard to tell what it really is.
Number 1,600. Number 1,600. It's probably the security.
Security for payroll, or was it for? We wouldn't give a contractual employee bonus, right?
No, I'm not sure why it's listed as a bonus.
Didn't I?
No. I have to pull it out. I have to see why it's listed as a bonus, if you want to come back to it.
Okay.
I can text payroll.
And I just didn't see it till late this afternoon, so I couldn't reach out. Thank you. Moving back to the consent agenda, Mr. White?
Yes. Yeah, I did have a question with the Robinson Engineer, I believe it was, for the $31,000. So, actually, is that like a retainer? Is that something we do every month? Or is that just like, what period of time does that actual cover, the $31,000?
Do you know, Pat?
Councilman, as you know, the Robinson Engineering is, functions as the town's engineering firm. The dollar amount would suggest that they did a higher volume than normal amount of work on the town's behalf. You're familiar with all the projects that we've been doing, both residential and business. So, that's, that's where I believe that would be.
Yeah, I just like to see your voice because, and I do know they do a lot of things.
Right. No, I understand.
Yes.
I understand. We can secure that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
Moving on then to Standing and Special Committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, we have several of the ordinances we had two weeks ago on first reading will be in front of us for second reading. That's all I have.
Okay. Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck?
Yeah, I know Steve's under the weather, couldn't be with us tonight. I know he's still working on the communication situation with the new radios for the street department. And then also with the mild winter, keep our fingers crossed, I know it's still March, we're going to start making plans for our spring cleanup. So, I'll get with Steve, and once we get something, we'll hopefully try to get the spring newsletter.
Well, for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, the only thing under Public Relations is Thursday, March 9th, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, inside the Mike Anderson Event Center, the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their Business Excellence Award Night, honoring 10 different awards. We've got a packed house, almost 200 people coming to that event. So, the town is sponsoring the, I believe it's the business longevity that you will be handing out, Mr. President. I will confirm that. So, anyone that wants to attend from 5 to 7 o'clock in the Mike Anderson Event Center, see Pat or Linda.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
I'm not certain if I should bring this up under Public Relations, but I did have a question as to the content manager you guys hired. I didn't know anything about it until I called him one day. So, I would like to know why we hired a guy, and I like Chaz, but I just wonder why do we hire a guy? And who does he report to? I feel uncomfortable because he's a, he's still a, he's still a news reporter.
Yeah, but he doesn't cover Maryville anymore, that was.
I know, but that was a special favor for him, but he's still.
Actually, he's not an employee, he's a contractual, doing contractual work for us and Pat.
Absolutely. So, Pat, maybe this, you can, you can clear it off for me. I had no idea.
Yeah, you approve the, you approve the salary ordinance where we have this position in there and also the job description.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't know it was going to be Chaz Riley, because I think that.
I think we got lucky getting Chaz Riley, right?
Well, maybe some of us did, but here's the thing. I, I just think that when you have a guy that's been here for years and he's been reporting on issues of all of our concerns, and now he's pretty much targeting specific concerns, well, maybe concerns, but specific output in terms of public relations, I, I have a problem with him being there. Actually, I tried to call The Times and ask them, well, who's going to, who's going to do the work now? So, is, is there a report from The Times here now? And this is what I'm talking about, because nobody's here to hear our voice, and Chaz used to kind of be pretty decently fair. So, I like in the future, I'm not comfortable, to be honest with you, because I don't know exactly who he's talking to. Only thing I know is I see press releases and stuff. I'm like, you know, you just cannot have one individual talking to the press. Now, if it wasn't the president, eh, it might be okay.
Yeah, he's not, he's not talking to the press, he's writing those press releases for us.
Right, right. And he's, and he's using his, he's using his connections to just send that right through.
No, we have those connections, there's no special connection.
I've tried to talk to these people a lot of times, they won't say a word to me. I won't even return a phone call. So, that's why I'm bringing that up, because I still feel uncomfortable about it, but that's my point. Thank you.
So, Pat, let's get Mr. White a copy of that, that job description that he's following and help educate Mr. White on his position and what he's doing.
Certainly. And, and so the entire council's aware. Councilman White and I had this conversation previous to this evening, and he is consistent in his comments about the hiring of Chaz Riley. You know, I've explained why, and, and opinion behind there's being a need for, so I will follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. White, continue on with Environmental Affairs, please.
Absolutely, yeah. And thank you, Marge, how you doing today?
Oh, fine, thank you.
Good. So, will you have anything to add to?
To the environment?
Yes.
Well, according to the local and the national news, COVID definitely has leaked out of China, their lab.
Yes.
All the channels on TV are reporting that, so if anybody thinks anything different, no, it came from China, COVID virus. So, COVID is still out there, too.
Yes.
So, make sure you get your shots.
Absolutely.
Your boosters, and try to stay healthy.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
And I would like to add, thank you, Marge, I would like to add as well that we were going to start looking at and still seeing how many people died or how many people were hospitalized. We were going to just talk about what the CDC wanted us to look at, and right now, we were at the mid-level at the last Town Council meeting. So, actually, now we're back down to the low level. So, it's tamping down for whatever reason. Like Marge says, don't take that virus, because that virus is stealthy. It's, it's.
It's still out there.
It's still out there.
The virus is still catching it every day.
And it still, and it still may morph into something else, because you hear, you hear a lot of clearing in the throats, and I hope that's allergies, to be honest with you, but yes. So, I don't have anything else other than that we are at the low level, which means that we never went to the high level and haven't seen any deaths. I would have probably reported it if it was a death there, but that's the end of that report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck?
I know at our last meeting, I reported on the FOP contract that is still in transition at this time, they're still trying to straighten out some verbiage in there. Hopefully, we'll have a signing at one of the March meetings.
Mr. Minchuck, where, where is it exactly being installed right now? Is it at the FOP or at our office?
The FOP just turned it over back over to us. We're reviewing it at this time, and giving it back to them for another review.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, this question is for our chief here. Thank you for doing a good job that you're doing. And I did have a couple of questions that I would like to ask you, specifically in the terms that you, you know, we had talked about your license plate reader. Did we ever get that took care of?
We did. It's finally, it looks like it's going to start going up in March.
Okay.
So, that was, we were at the mercy of Indiana Department of Transportation on that.
Okay.
But it looks like the issue has been resolved.
Okay. And secondly, I'd like to thank you and your, your crew for doing the blitz that you did. I think we need more of those. Got a lot of positive comments from individuals, they felt a lot safer, and it was actually being very prayerful for you guys for protecting us. So, I just want to make note that we are appreciative of what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minchuck?
Just, I'm sorry, just prior to the meeting, I had a citizen walk up with a letter about the service of one of our police officers, excellence they had done. I'm going to turn this over to the chief, and then maybe we can do something nice for him in one of our feature meetings.
Great. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, Mr. President, we had an RDC meeting before the Town Council meeting, and the major item of action was the awarding of the CNO Trail Phase 3 to Garyup Construction. The total price of that is $1.3 million. However, this is an 80-20 grant from the DNR, so the Town of Maryville is responsible for 20% of that, approximately $275,000. And this has been awarded and will come out of the various TIF districts since that trail traverses several of the TIF districts, makes it an eligible project for that funding. So, that's how we will contribute our 20%, Mr. Reardon, correct?
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Okay. And then also, at that meeting, I called for an RDC workshop on March 14th at 5 o'clock to discuss several different items. Pat and I and Angie will be putting together an agenda on that, so Tuesday, March 14th at 5 o'clock.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak?
Thank you. Spring is fast approaching, and right now, we will, I will, be checking all of our parks.
Spring is fast approaching, and right now, we will, I will, be checking all of our parks. Last season, we had rehabbed all the parks, made sure they were mowed, and kept in excellent condition. I am still waiting to hear about the bids on Rosenbaum Park for the roof of the shelter, so I probably will be getting together with Torrance as soon as possible, but that's it for now, Mr. President, thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Riding through the town, I, I noticed that we've got a lot of vacant lots, and in these vacant lots are a lot of fallen trees that are, whoever owns them are not maintaining them, and if you ride down 58th Avenue from Broadway back down to Pennsylvania, Stormwater did an excellent job of cleaning up that area, and so I'm gonna get with code enforcement and Vicky, and we're going to identify these owners, we're gonna send them letters and encourage them to address this issue, because the, those areas look horrible as you ride through, and they just got, you got pockets of vacant lots that where trees are falling over and almost into the street, that's creating a traffic hazard as well as a site hazard, so we gotta get, we gotta get on that, and I will be on that tomorrow morning with Vicky, that's my report.
I think we actually are gonna read a second reading ordinance that'll give some teeth to the nuisance.
Right, well, yeah, that'll give us some teeth, but I, you know, as I looked at that thing today, I'm, I was embarrassed to ride through the town, as, when I saw these areas where trees are falling, and they're falling into the streets, and there's trash and all kinds of stuff in there that need to be addressed.
And also, Sheila, we have the same issue now on Grant Street near Sedona, where they're clearing all the land, all the mess is right in the street, all the fallen trees are right there at the curbside, just what Rich said, it looks terrible.
I did speak with that gentleman, the owner of that property that tore those trees down, I did speak with him, and he is supposed to be getting that up.
Yeah, I'm shocked I haven't heard from the residents there.
Well, I have.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Actually, this is for Richard, I did talk to Vicky today because I was asking her about the Opank Council course, and would it be brought up on a blight committee, I think Pat and I had just kind of briefly talked, maybe that was the case, could be the case, but I asked her today, and she told me we cannot force people to open up a business there.
That's right.
So, so then I say, in that case, then, is that a piece of abandoned property, or is it just gonna sit there for the next 10 years?
As long as they pay their property taxes, nothing we can do about it.
Well, as long as, as long as it's secured as well, though.
Secured and...
That's also tonight, we have a...
No broken windows, no hanging gutters.
No, so, because the reason I'm saying this, because we're going on four years of it sitting there, and, and, you know, as, as, you know, we're trying to improve that side of Maryville.
Yeah, I think they closed during COVID, didn't they?
Yeah, they weren't doing good business, no way, I think Richard one time said they had a, some kind of controlled...
As long as they keep it up and it's, it's secure, like Counselor said, there's not much we can do.
Well, I think we, because we had a conversation.
We encouraged the owner to look at any and all offers that were coming in on the property, to bring some vitality to that corner.
Sure.
So we did have the conversation with the owner.
So we kind of had the mercy of the owner to, whether he wants to do anything ever. Okay, I just, I just wanted to know what we, what kind of teeth we had.
Well, no, but I, I think with the owner's consideration, though, I think they'd rather have a vital business in there as well, that's bringing traffic into the center, the center's been struggling, rather than just leaving that building abandoned, not, not abandoned so much as just...
Empty.
Empty and vacant.
Yes, okay, thank you, that was my question for Richard there.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Mr.
Mr. Pettit, Chairman.
That's all right, Mr. President, couple items, I want to give kudos to Mr. Svetinoff, he has put together, and the committee, Leonard and Jeff and I, and, and those that attended these meetings, Joe and the Boys and Girls Club have put together the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Partial Facility Usage Agreement, Terrence was involved in this as well, Lisa, as everyone knows, the Boys and Girls Club is running their after-school program inside the four rooms, the Commercial Insight Room, the McDonald's Room, the AFL-CIO Room, and the Rotary Room in the community center for Maryville, we've partnered with Maryville School Corporation on that, and at this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we approve this Partial Facility Usage Agreement, this will pay the town $2,000 a month from August 22nd until the last day of school this year in 2023, that's my motion.
Second.
You have a motion from Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Partial Facility Use Agreement with the Boys and Girls Club.
Joe, do you have any additional comments on this?
No, it's, it's been a long time coming, but finally we have an agreement that's, lays out all the terms and conditions of our partnership, at this time, I encourage the town council to accept it as written.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The, the next item that, that Joe and I will be tackling in the committee is finalizing the sale of the three acres to the Boys and Girls Club, the redevelopment commission in previous actions have committed $250,000 a year for 10 years on a lease payment to the Boys and Girls Club as our contribution to them building a standalone facility on that property, so Joe and I will be getting with Matt Galeros and their attorney, and hopefully finalizing that transaction here in the next 60 to 90 days.
They had some initial comments that came to us with, we answered those comments, and we're just currently awaiting their response, so we're in process, though.
And then finally, Mr. President, Lisa, your, your pitch hitting for Terrence, I'll come down and see you guys, and we'll find a, a day, Jeff and Leonard, with Terrence's schedule, and I'll call a committee meeting, we've kind of gotten away from that fourth Thursday because of some events, we had the, the Black History Month dinner last Thursday, and we need to find maybe a better day of the week that's more amenable, so I'll work with you guys on that, let Terrence know I'll come down and see him, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have one thing, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
Didn't, did you get the email where they're gonna expand the children that's coming from Pierce to, from 30 to 60?
Yeah.
Will be at capacity then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's excellent that they are, that they're doing that, I guess they figured, they gotta pay for it, they might as well have more people there.
Yeah.
I think, I think that that's great.
And I, I think it shows that the programs are a success there, too.
It's working, yeah.
Exactly, and then one, one more thing, Sean, with Boys and Girls Club, I had the opportunity to be the judge for the Youth of the Year, that's a great opportunity, and I would encourage anyone that ever gets that opportunity to please accept it, because when you hear those kids' speeches, it's a great time, and the lady that I selected was the winner this year, nice, nice young lady, about 15 years old.
Very good. Mr. Hardaway, keep the floor with your special projects, committee report, please.
Okay, here we go, first thing, I'd like to thank everyone that attended the dinner last Thursday evening, we had over 350 people there, mixed reviews, but everything that I got was positive, everybody enjoyed it, there were some concerns coming from certain people, but I don't think that they were warranted, but they were concerned. Next thing is the, May 9th is going to be municipal day, we've had conversations with the principal of MIS, and so we're gonna continue to move forward with that, June 10th is going to be on June the 17th this year, and we're gonna open up the, to all residents, any resident that is interested in being a part of the committee, please contact Sister Sheila Shai, and she, in, in her office building and planning, and she will take all of those names down, and she will kind of like coordinate the list of people that are going to participate in that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Did you want to touch at all on the food and beverage tax?
I'm gonna let you do that.
Let me do that, okay. Well, as you, as you guys may have seen in the paper, the, the Indiana Senate passed Maryville's request and Jasper, City of Jasper's request to authorize a up to 1% food and beverage tax, so it now moves on to the House of Representatives, before it goes to the governor's desk for approval, but let me, let me first quantify this by saying, it just authorizes us to do the tax if we choose to, it's not automatic, it doesn't just happen, it's still up to the council to pass the proper ordinance, to have a public hearing, discuss what we would do with the funds once we receive them, but estimates from London Witty show that it could generate up to, or probably more than, I should say, 1.3 million dollars annually for the town, go toward projects that increase tourism, support our parks and rec programs, et cetera.
Well, one thing to stress as well, Mr. President, is this food and beverage tax is on prepared food in restaurants, this has absolutely, in capital letters, nothing to do with groceries that you buy at Strax or Meyer or anywhere else, this is in the restaurants and the bars, this is not in the groceries and people buying food, and it's for those that have disposable income that go out to dinner, it will not affect the, the senior population or the low-income population that may be on a limited budget.
That's true. Thank you, I'm gonna go back up on the agenda now because Kelly has a explanation for us on that one claim, so let's go back up to the consent agenda for a moment, Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
Yes, vendor number 1600, payroll fund ARP bonuses in the amount of 2,02332 for the ARP bonus, sorry to tell you, Mr. Hardaway, that you actually did approve these bonuses, and in fact, it's on the, up for second reading even though we're gonna have to get it redone because ordinance is misspelled again, before you guys can sign it, but you guys approved it at the last meeting, they're the bonuses for the police officers who were left off the list accidentally, when everybody else got their bonus.
All right.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, see, it's hard to tell that from the description, so thank you for clearing it up, I appreciate that, I have no other questions.
That's why we bring the...
Oh, I, absolutely.
Mr. President?
Here, so you can see them.
One second, Mr. White, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. White to approve the consent agenda, and Mr. White.
Yeah, I'd just like to go back to the, the food and beverage tax, if you don't mind, specifically because the Senate is the one that passed it, so does it have to go back to the House?
Yeah, it does, I, I bet you guess.
It has to go, it has to go in front of the House right now.
Okay.
They'll look it over, we'll have, we'll have, we have one state representative carrying it right now, we'll probably have two state representatives carrying it, and they'll decide whether there, it'll be granted a hearing in the House, granted a hearing in the House, it'll go before the Senate for a vote, just like it did, just like it did in the Senate, and then if the House agrees to pass it either as is or as amended, then it would eventually go before the governor for a signature.
Okay.
And the governor could decide whether he's going to sign it or not sign it, but I will tell you, to get a 46 to 3 vote in the Senate is...
That's unheard of.
And it, I think it necessitates our perseverance in trying to get this tax passed, so.
Okay, no more questions on that one.
Mr. President, you have a motion on the floor.
We do, thank you very much, Mr. Hardaway, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to the Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, our representative is Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President, unfortunately, due to some medical issues, I have not been able to be regulated there, but I'm, I should be ready to go this month, in March, because again, they do meetings bimonthly, I think maybe, I got one of our CAC members out there, Mr. Varan Hines, who I've been knowing for quite a few years, informed me that it got cold and a lot of pipes busted in there, so I don't know the extent of the damage down there, maybe it burned, may know, but I, I don't know, but I, after the day, I will have a report as to what happened, that's it.
If you're feeling better, are you gonna go there and check it out?
Well, they might not want me there, but yeah, I'll go there if you ask me to come. You know, I used to work for those people, so you know, I'm sure they're probably not gonna be happy to see me all the time, thank you, that's it.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway is our...
No report, our next meeting is the third Thursday of March.
Thank you. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President, much of our focus has been on the two bills we're reading about in the newspaper, this food and beverage tax, as well as bill relating to the establishment of a convention center, I, I read with interest that the bill would open up the location of the center to any and all communities in, in Lake County, certainly there's stipulations to be established, and, and I haven't had an opportunity to pull the bill down, but I'm encouraged by the fact that there's some, there's some positive movement in the discussion of that convention center, of course, this council and members of the audience may remember that a commission was, pardon me, a study was commissioned several years ago, and it identified two of the top three or four locations in, in the town of Maryville, those locations are still available, so that's, that's all I have to report at this time, sir.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Mr. White.
Yeah, just additionally for Pat, actually, do the town of Maryville could not build their own convention center, or are we not looking in that part of, of the deal there? Because I think that we could move forward, and, and then hoping that they build a convention center here, we got like other communities that might be interested in well, as well, so I, I just want to put that out there for thought.
Well, thought provoking, and I, and I, I know that we're a community of big thinkers, but there's an awful lot to go into that, studies and such, then the reality that with this bill, we'd be directly competing with, to an extent, ourselves, but then many other communities, but again, to answer your question, if the dollars are there, and this organization, this body agreed to, then in theory, yeah, we could build our own.
Yeah, I just, I was just basing on, on the fact that we had to depend on other communities, whether they may or may not get it, and then that kind of still leaves us out in the open, so hopefully we in the running, the top running, that, that's all, Mr. President, for that, thank you.
Thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Span.
No report at this time.
Department reports, I see that you came to the meeting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you filling in for Terrence?
Yes, I am, he just wanted me to let you know that what was going on for the month of March in our facility, we actually have a card and collectible expo coming up on the 11th and 12th of March, have several people coming, we have Doug Plank from the Chicago Bears for autograph signing, we have several, Rudy, I'm gonna blow this name, Rudy Rudiger, from the Notre Dame legend, he will be there.
Is it Zoric?
And then there's a Tom Zbikowski?
Zbikowski.
Thank you. Okay, and then also a Jarrett Patterson will also be there for autograph signing, we have a big MMA fight coming up on the 18th of March, it is going to be a very big event, and then on the 24th and through the 26th, we have a gymnastic event coming up into our facility, so Terrence just wanted me to let you know what was going on.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to touch base, you've adopted the code enforcement, right now, we're currently working on establishing new SOPs, I'm still learning how everything works as far as ordinances go, what we can and cannot do, this is gonna be something that we're taking, we're gonna take a step further with, because we're gonna retrain all the employees that are code enforcement officers now, so they can operate more efficiently. Part of all that is also, is we want to be a little bit more aggressive, and just to kind of touch on what you said, Councilman Hardaway, there are a lot of things that I see as well that are, that are horrible, and there are some people that generally don't know that they are in violation of codes, or ordinances, rather, and those are the people that, you know, we're gonna talk to and give them fair warning and say, hey, you... hey, you got to fix this. But there's also a lot of these people that aren't even, they're not even in the same state as us, and they have property, they don't take care of it. So as a result, those are the ones that we're going to look, they know better. They've been here long enough and they're not taking care of their property. So those are the ones that we're going to focus on, and we're going to be, we're going to be making sure that they're following the rules. If not, they're going to be cited. Secondly, I wanted to comment on, kind of touch base from last meeting. We are currently going through a hiring process for animal control that's going to be up in March 9th, and we're still, there's people have been calling in and acquiring, but nobody's really put in the applications just yet. So if anybody is interested, or if you know anybody that is interested, please feel free to send them our way. In the meantime, we're looking for short-term solutions, and what I'm saying by this is we've been in contact with different shelters, we've been in contact with humane societies. It's moving slow, but it is moving, and I feel confident that we're going to get it resolved here soon. Long-term, we're working on a long-term solution with the Public Safety Committee to make this, to fix any issues that we had in the past and move forward and make everything Regarding police matters, well, even though that was police matters, but when you think of police, you think of officers, but this is our guys as well now. We're working on doing some, hosting some type of, I don't know if you want to call them workshops or something with the general public, and to focus on getting better communication between the police department and the public. I think that's very important, and that's like, kind of been a pet project of mine, and I'm trying to move forward with it. We're also working on different new things, trying to become more efficient and work with more agencies as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Span.
Chief, I got a incident about two weeks ago, and I wanted to thank you. I got one of those cameras in the door, and I'm looking at this camera, and here's some guy flying down the street about 70 miles an hour in the neighborhood. The next thing I see is six police cars behind him. Now, I don't know who left those tire tracks over the curb in my yard, but I think I'm going to have to tie and fill them back up, but that was very, it was very something nice to see something like that.
Thank you.
You know. So would you thank your guys for me?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right.
Planning and Building Department, Ms. Shine.
Not at this point. I prefer to BZA.
Mr. Reardon, anything to add?
Thank you. Moving on tonight to General Orders. We have a first reading ordinance, it's 23-11. The ordinance of the town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations within the 2023 budget, specifically a town donation fund, and this pertains to the Black History Celebration Dinner.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck for approval on first reading of 23-11. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Abstain.
Okay, and Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Six, sorry, in favor?
Six one, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to second reading ordinances, ordinance 23-02. It's an ordinance authorizing additional appropriations within our budget, specifically the general fund to handle the increases we're doing for the police department, and also local roads and streets. You see the accounts listed there.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzulak, with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of this ordinance on second and final reading. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this specific ordinance, 23-02? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And President Bella?
Yes. Seven zero, motion carries. Moving on to tonight to ordinance, amended ordinance, 23-03. It's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, amending ordinance 22-29A, which are the 2023 salary ordinance and amendment of ordinance 23-01. This is exactly what we were talking about. Here's your...
Yep.
...ordinance. I didn't, I didn't relate those two together. This is for the ARP bonuses. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White for approval on second reading. Any discussion from the council?
I do have a question, though.
Madam Clerk, Treasurer?
My only question is, this, we don't be able to sign it tonight because I pointed out last time it's misspelled, there's still some misspellings in this hard copy, but is it okay because I wanted to get them their money since they got left off? That's why it's on the claims list for them to be able to get a check this week, since they're going to approve it tonight, even though it won't be signed until later.
Yeah, it's, it's still legal. And it's been approved, it's just not been signed to the scrutiny reserves.
Right, and so it'll be fine. Right, we're going to approve it tonight, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, any public comment on this, on this ordinance, 23-02? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, and motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 23-04. It's an ordinance amending the Town Code Sections 12-91 entitled Parking in Yards, and 12-188 entitled Definitions and repealing all Town Code Sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Counselor, do you want to, just one second, please. Counselor, you want anything to add?
No, it was last time, the town council wanted to tighten up on the definition of parking in yards, tend to include vehicles, motorized vehicles, off-road vehicles and machinery. Also, the definition section of the ordinance was also expanded to include those. So I encourage the town council at this time to approve this ordinance on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzulak, second by Mr. White. Mr. Pettit, did you have a question, I'm sorry, or comment?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I do want to point out, though, in Section, Section 2, we've covered a lot of different types of vehicles now, so this is some of the teeth I was talking about for code enforcement. So dirt bikes, dune buggies, go-karts, minibikes, mopeds, motor scooters, motorcycles, motorized bicycles, motorized vehicles, off-road vehicles and machinery of any kind. This will allow code enforcement to bring it to the attention of residents that these types of items are not allowed to be parked on the front lawn. And we're going to be out watching for this sort of thing and be issuing some warnings and citations eventually, right?
What about boats?
That's not listed here.
They do have boats parked out there. On the lawn, and the dry...
I think that's covered under...
Are boats already?
Covered under something else, yeah.
Yeah. We discussed it under something else.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different ordinance.
Coming in, another ordinance.
Yes. That's got to do with motorhomes and stuff like that.
Yes.
Recreation, it's there. But this is often including...
Yeah, right, right.
Any other discussion from the council?
Just one, real quick. I've had a couple of people from my ward reach out to me and reference this ordinance, and I had to explain it to them. The, when you say parking in yards, you mean permanently parking vehicles or routinely parking vehicles in your yard? People were getting very detailed, like, hey, I've got a riding lawnmower, what if I'm doing my, cutting my yard, and I leave my riding lawnmower in the front yard, and I go in the backyard to do something, and somebody rides by? No, something like that. That's temporary. You can leave stuff in your yard like that, but we're talking about when you routinely or permanently park vehicles or anything motorized in your yard, that's what we're talking about here. So just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Minchuck. Any other public comment on this ordinance, second reading? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place. Now, I had raised on a different occasion that we're not covering the fact that there are some people that live on those snow routes, and if there is snow, they can't park on the streets, and if they don't have the space to park on their driveway, then where are they supposed to be parking? And I think this would be covered, but under the parking in yards part, where would these people be parking? Should they be going down the road, parking with a neighbor? I think that's not very feasible.
Sure, as long as they're not parking on the front lawn, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, but that's not feasible. They can't just park in somebody else's driveway. I think we're still having a gap between when the snow falls and they can't park in the street, as opposed to not, no parking in the yards, and I think that could be really unfair to some people. I have a big driveway, I don't have a problem, but I see neighbors that don't, and for them, this is a real challenge. So I just want to point that out, you know.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 23-05. It's an ordinance amending Town Code Sections 6-327 entitled Standards for Maintenance and repealing all other Town Sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Counselor?
Again, this is a ordinance having to do with the standard of maintenance concerning all buildings that are abandoned to have be not only secured but boarded up. Ordinance 2305 provides the methodology and method on how to board up buildings and make everything secure in the town. So at this time, I encourage the town council to go ahead and pass 2305 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzulak, second by Mr. Minchuck for approval on second reading, ordinance Standards of Maintenance. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, public comment, any public comment on this ordinance tonight? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mrs. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was halfway through.
Call him mister.
Forgive me, I...
I'm sorry.
I didn't even hear it. I heard what Rick said.
I think I'm voting aye on this, so, okay. That's seven zero?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you. Moving on to ordinance 23-06. An ordinance of the Town Code Sections 22-172 entitled Zoning Off-Street Parking and repealing all Town Code Sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith, specifically zoning for storage boxes, dumpsters, commercial vehicles, et cetera. Mr. Svetnov?
2306 has to do with storage containers, dumpsters, semi-trailers, containers, and cloth, cloth ports that are put out there for cars. This ordinance establishes a definition section for these items, and they're being located on the property. It also establishes along, how long items can be located on the property as well. So at this time, I encourage the town council to accept 2306 and approve tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzulak, second by Mr. Pettit for approval of 23-06 on final reading. Chief, this is what we were referring to earlier. This has a lot of teeth in it, there's a long list here of things that aren't allowed to be sitting around the property, so. And just for the audience, we're making some efforts here to clean up the town a little bit, make sure we stay on top of it, and these new ordinances will give us the teeth we need to enforce those types of cleanups and keep properties looking proper, which actually helps all of our property values, so. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, open for public comment, any public comment on this ordinance, 23-06? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uzulak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All seven in favor.
All seven in favor, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 23-07. An ordinance to promote the general welfare of the citizens and prohibiting donation boxes within the town and repealing all Town Code Sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Counselor?
The problem that's been identified by the town council has been donation boxes placed outside of businesses. Donation drop boxes are sometimes put on the property without getting the owner's permission of the property itself. The drop boxes are overflowing and sometimes not emptied in a timely fashion. Ordinance 2307 will allow us to prohibit donation drop boxes or place into a process where they can get approval for these drop boxes to be located in front of these businesses. So at this time, I encourage the town council to adopt 2307 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzulak, a second by Mr. Pettit for approval on second reading, 23-07 on second and final reading, general welfare of citizens and prohibiting donation boxes within the town.
I had a question.
Sure.
You know, I used to work for United Way, and we did Salvation Army boxes for people that were elderly and didn't have money, and that's just a temporary thing. Are we talking about that, too?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if they get permission from the owner.
Yeah, we could still do it and allow it.
They could still do it.
There's a process.
They just have to apply for, they just have to apply.
I just don't want to misunderstand that.
No, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that any and all drop boxes that are dropped throughout the town, first of all, get the permission of the owner of the resident, or of the real estate itself, but secondly, we know who owns them in case we need to have them ruined for any reason.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White?
So what do we tell people that actually want to do donations? How do we tell them that they can't, they don't have any place to drop anything off? So are we going to suggest, like Don said, in the terms of taking them to the Salvation Army or to the Goodwill, or?
They just need to come and see Sheila, and planning a building, and there's a process, right?
Sheila? What's your, like, why is me?
Go Sheila.
Why is me?
Okay. Thank you, that's enough.
Is that good?
Yeah.
You want the phone number?
If you got one, for sure.
It's just, there's a process now, so we keep tabs on all these, and it's really required, something we have to do. Is there any public comment on this, ordinance 23-07?
I'd like to make a small comment.
Mr. Span?
If the, the stuff they're putting out there is junk, rusty, tattered clothing or something, why, why can't we just remove that? Why should we? why can't we just remove that?
We'd have to have a whole, we'd have to have a whole crew driving around the town just doing that, Don.
Well, it's also on private property, Mr. President. The boxes are dropped on private property, they need to get the permission of the property owner. Our public works are not allowed on private property, correct, Mr. Svetinoff?
Correct. But what we do do with this ordinance is we're required to get the owner's information of the box. So if we do have that problem, we can send them a letter saying, hey, your box is overflowing, it doesn't comply with ordinance. At this time, we like, we're giving you a warning or have it removed immediately.
They should be notified that they should have like, you know, if that box is overflowing, I mean, come on.
Well, but the thing is, for a long time without this ordinance, we've never know who owns the drop boxes. So without having that knowledge of where they're at, who owns them, where they're located, we've not had the opportunity to send out warning notices or violation notices to say, remove the box at this time. And again, you don't want to trespass on private property as a municipality because there could be certain legal concerns with that.
Yep. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Zuzelak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight. It's ordinance amending the town code section thirteen dash two entitled Nuisances Illustrative Enumeration and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
This deals with the famous problem of the basketball hoops in the street. So at this time, the basketball hoops cannot be pulled out onto the street, they must be located on the property. It gives specifics on how it should be located and where it should be located at. So at this time, I encourage the town council to accept twenty-three oh eight and adopt it on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Zuzelak, a second by Mr. White for approval, ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight on second and final reading. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, open to the public. Any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Zuzelak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Bella?
How many votes was that?
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries, thank you. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine, and thank you, audience, for indulging us. It's just one of those nights, we had to get these done and they're all here, but believe me, it's good for the town. This ordinance is to promote the general welfare of citizens and limit the number of animals residing within a household within the town and repealing all other town sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Counselor?
Twenty-three oh nine limits the number of animals residing in the household to three. The ordinance also details what counts as an animal. So at this time, we encourage the town council to accept twenty-three oh nine and pass it on second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chair, recognize Mr. Pettit for the motion and a second for Mrs. Zuzelak for ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine limiting pets allowed in households.
That's a sticky one, isn't it?
Well, this is not really, it's not really more than what we currently have, right, Sheila, on the books?
It's just the wording change.
Yeah, we're cleaning up ordinance, really. It's always been that number, but yeah.
Okay, I'm cool.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Zuzelak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion carries. I will now present the last ordinance of the evening.
Somebody say, "Yay!"
Ordinance twenty-three dash ten, ordinance establishing a parking regulation promoting unencumbered access to mailboxes and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Counselor?
The ordinance has been a problem for years with people blocking other people's access to mailboxes. With twenty-three, ordinance twenty-three ten, this will no longer occur. The details are outlined in the ordinance along with the fine schedule. But at this time, I encourage the town council to accept and adopt twenty-three ten on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have multiple motions for approval. Mrs. Zuzelak, the chair recognizes Mrs. Zuzelak and Mr. White. Did you second? Mr. White seconded for ordinance twenty-three dash ten, motor vehicles and traffic blocking mailboxes in town. Always a problem, more specifically in neighborhoods like Turkey Creek where there's a single car drive, the same issue. There's nowhere to put the cars. So you put them in the street and if you're there at mailtime, you're blocking the mailbox, so.
It's a big problem in Ward Three. Not only do we have single car driveways, we also have a lot of cul-de-sacs. And it also causes a huge problem. And they overflow from one to the other.
Well, maybe this will increase awareness. It's all we can really try to do. Any public comment on this ordinance? Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Aye.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Zuzelak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion passes. Madam Clerk, treasurer? Moving on tonight, we don't have any resolutions on the agenda. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan AP voucher register summary for purchases for February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. The amount of vouchers for tonight are seven thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of the AP voucher in the amount of seventy-three eighty-five and eighty-nine cents. Discussion from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White?
I was just going to ask, do we have a balance that we can, well, that I could have, actually? Is there a balance in the ARP?
There is a balance, we don't have it here tonight.
Okay. Can we have it, Pat? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions tonight. Ms. Shine?
Yes, Mr. President. Our first petitioner for the evening is Andy Tylaka. Could you please come to the podium? This is for special exception approval to allow an auto repair with outside storage to be located at four oh one West Eighty-Second Place in the C-three Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow automotive repair with outside storage in the C-three Highway Commercial Zoning District on five point four two acres. Cars ASAS Solutions Calibration Center is an automotive laboratory specializing in electronic diagnosis and calibrations of vehicle safety system. The services includes electronic vehicle programming, vehicle sensors, alignment, scanning of vehicle electronic system, and recalibrations of vehicle safety system. This does not include grinding, welding, painting, or vehicle hose lifting, impact wrenches, noise, fumes, hazards, waste, and air emissions. The rubbish behind the east and to the right south of the property will be disposed of. One of the two existing tenants will be moving out. There will be, they will be removing some of the items in the gate portion of the property. Items from the previous tenant will be disposed of. There will be new LED lighting and interior painting of gray and off-white. Epoxy of the flooring will be off-white and gray. The interior of the building will be, the exterior of the building will be painted in two thousand twenty-four. There will be four bays on the north side of the building. Calibrations of the vehicles take a lot of space for targets which limit the amount of working bays that can be used. The south side of the building already has tenants. There will not be a waiting room. This is a business-to-business operations. Walk-in customers will not be involved. Calibrations of vehicle safety system is the last step after a vehicle has been repaired by a body shop. As the vehicles are transported directly from the body shop when they complete their repairs to have the safety system calibrated, such as adopted cruise control lane departure of sensors, no repairs or paint work on the premises. There will be fifteen vehicles on site, including staff, cars waiting to be worked on, and vehicles waiting to be picked up. Property will retain one tenant with two to four employees parked outside. However, parking is adequate. Vehicles will not be on premises for more than two working days. Calibrations takes about four to eight hours to complete. There will be five to ten cars parked overnight. The hours of operation are seven a.m. to six p.m., Monday through Friday, and there will be five employees. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Counsel, this is in my district and I have looked over this extensively. The only thing I reached out to Sheila about was, I'm not fond of the address. That address takes me way over to Polo Club Drive. So I don't know what the four oh one West Eighty-Second Place, where that came from.
So that address was issued years and years and years ago.
Okay.
We can change addresses, Mr. President. The only thing is that is existing tenants with existing Nippsco Water and all of that will be affected with the address change. To change the address for us is just a call out to mapping, but then it would be an issue to change the address for Nippsco, the water company, and et cetera.
Well, since it's not really walk-in customers, I'm sure that the service industry is going to know where to find you, is that right?
Well, and that's good to know, for sure, but, yeah, they'll still know, but they still will be using Google Maps to find us as well. So that's good to know.
Might be something to look into with the post office, maybe?
Very much, yeah.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White for approval of this petitioner. Any Tylek?
I have a couple of questions, and I've known Andy and his dad for quite some time. And for those that aren't familiar, Tom and Ed's Auto Body is owned by the Tylaka family, made the investment in Maryville, south of Bozak. Andy, what's the investment in this project going to be?
With the building and the renovation and the equipment is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And how many employees are going to be involved?
Five employees at max. This, for lack of better options, auto body repair was the only zoning, but there won't be any repair, there won't be any painting. It's basically driving sensors and computers that we have to recalibrate.
So customers that are at Tom and Ed's will come down here?
The business will be transferring the vehicle. So it's the last thing you have to do after repair that these things are affected. So we'll be servicing the Tom and Ed's locations as well as other body shops because this is the only available option that they would have.
Would you service dealerships also?
No, dealerships do have, they don't, they do have their own type of calibration. It's just a minimal amount of dealerships actually do it per what the manufacturer says.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything else to add, Sheila? Your voice vote is not on this, right?
Right.
So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheila.
Our next petitioner is Divine Goddess Dance Studio. Special exception approval. Petitioner is Divine Goddess Dance Studio and the owner is Tiger Group LLC, and it's located at seventy-eight seventy Broadway in Suite H, C-two Community Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a dance studio to be located at seventy-eight seventy Broadway, Suite H, in the C-two Community Commercial Zoning District. The dance studio will operate from five p.m. to nine p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday, ten a.m. to three p.m., closed on Sundays. The classes will be twelve or less. Divine Goddess Studio wants to make dance accessible to everyone specializing in classes from children two through adults in majorette, hip-hop, ballet, contemporary conditioning, and etiquette. There will be two studio spaces. There will be one full-time instructor, four part-time instructor, administrator, and assistant administrator. Recitals will be held at an off-site venue. Dancers will arrive five to ten minutes before the start of class. A parent must sign the dancer in at the time the parents sign in table. At the end of class, parents will sign their dancers out. The instructors will remain with dancers until all students have been picked up. Parents will park in the rear of the building. Parking is adequate for this use. The dance studio will administer hand sanitizers and dancers enter the studio. There will be additional hand sanitizers throughout the studio for COVID safety, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. President, this is in my ward. I'll make a motion to approve Divine Goddess Dance Studio. I do have one question.
Motion by Mr. Pettit?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Pettit?
Just confirmation, sir, this is upstairs above the Ross Township Assessor, correct?
Correct.
Building right next door to us.
Correct. That's the reason we chose to do after five o'clock because business hours are close.
They'll be out of there and you'll have enough room and parking and all that.
Correct.
And Sheila, was there any remonstration?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Look at the address, it's almost like in our hallway back there. Pretty close.
Mr. President?
Mr. Span?
I'd like to pay for Leonard White's.
That was a great one. I gotta get out.
My dance class.
All right. Let the record show that Mr. Span is paying for five dance classes.
I'm gonna be there, too.
Right. You still gotta do it.
That's a better one.
Anything else to add for the council, guys?
No, not, actually, no, but for March, if you do have kids and they have trade days on their book card, we give a free classes to those.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great.
How much rent do you have to pay?
He said again?
How much rent are you paying?
It's thirteen hundred.
How much?
Thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Maybe Leonard's got to go dance, right?
Right.
Five lessons.
Our last petitioner for this evening is the Maryville Community School Corporation. Is the applicant and the petitioner, and they have special exception approval on sixteen point forty acres. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a building addition, including a new lab and classroom to the existing high school. The addition of the property is not near any property line. The addition is two hundred and eighteen feet from the property line. The new building addition is approximately fifty thousand square feet. The new building addition occurs at the property near the location of the current labs. The new building addition is located on the existing facility and will not alter traffic flow. The Maryville Development Team, which includes Matt Lake, Stormwater Director, Robertson Engineer, and Steve King Engineer Supervisor, have approved the civil plans and drawing for this addition, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. President, again, this is in my ward. I'll make a motion to approve the special exception approval for Maryville Community School Corporation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of this petitioner. So I do want to touch base on one item. How you doing? I did talk to Nick Brown today and looking at the footprint here, we're gonna lose part of that parking lot that we normally use, or we did use last year for the 4th of July fireworks on the third. Is that gonna be quartered off or fenced off so that it's organized and we don't want to interfere with the building, you know?
So I did forward Mr. Brown the fencing plan, so that will be shut down, but we will be able to use the front parking lot that we anticipated using last year.
Okay.
That we didn't have to. So we'll still have that front parking lot to use for the fireworks.
So that entire, not just the blue area, but the entire parking lot will be shut off?
All but about 50 feet probably on the east side of the parking lot will be shut down.
So we can maybe have two rows of parking there?
Yeah, we could probably have two rows there.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. President, I do, go ahead, finish the vote. I do have a comment after this.
Motion carries.
Given that this is the school corporation, Sheila, I believe we modified our fee structure for them, correct? On the inspections? And we'll be getting 50%?
Yes.
Is that correct? 50%? Okay.
Yeah, and thank you for that. All right.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to new business, any new business before us?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Here's my, I just have a few things to say about Black History Month because Black History Month means different things to different people. And I am an African-American black guy and our Black History Month, I think it was a good idea, but what I didn't, maybe I'm one of the people they're talking about to have concerns, was because I didn't know that we wouldn't be honoring Maryville people. We honor people from Hammond. That didn't make sense to me. But tonight, I would like to actually honor those black elected officials from Maryville, beginning with Judy Dunlap, Curtis Pearson, Eric Blackman, our first African-American police chief, Willie Cuttino, our Terrell Taylor and Kelly White Gibson. I think they deserve to be, if not honored, certainly recognized, and that didn't happen.
Yeah, we didn't do any introductions at all of any political...
No, no, nothing, sir. Because it's a black history thing, okay? So it impacts us different. They should have been recognized, but they weren't. And there's nothing on the radar, you know, you know what we talked about, you know, we had made the statement as that they would be recognized. Didn't happen. But people from Hammond were recognized. I find that to be a problem when we got, for the first time in history, this number African-American or black women and men out here, one peep said about them. So I would just like to take this time, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Tell you, I'm honoring you on the last day of Black History Month. I'm honoring Mr. Curtis Pearson, I'm honoring Eric Blackman, Willie Cuttino, Terrell Taylor and, again, Kelly White Gibson. I don't know why you came up twice, but...
Thank you. And I don't want to leave out Judge Gina Jones.
And Judge Gina Jones. This is important because that's a lot of people that didn't even get a blink of an eye. So, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to honor people that I think was just like with the old, when Mr., when we had President Bush made the situation about no child left behind, why they want any African-Americans left behind either, they should have deserved the gap.
Well, in that spirit, also, the co-first black councilman is also Mr. Richard Hardaway.
Oh, it was two at the same time?
At the same time, yes.
Yes, in fact, Rich and Terrell broke the color barrier in 2003. We went through that election, he and I. I always repeat it, that Rich and I have been together 20 years and I'm very proud to be with Rich for 20 years and serving this town, and I think he's done a hell of a job.
Absolutely.
In what he's done for the town and war too. So don't...
But this is African, this is about African-American.
Don't mention the ones that came after Terrell and Rich. Let's not forget them.
This is about, this is black people's stuff, this is not your stuff.
Okay, it's history, Leonard.
Well, I know my history.
It's election fact.
I know my history.
But I did mention him, I made sure he was not left out. I definitely, definitely mentioned him.
Kelly did mention Rich, it's election fact, Richard and Terrell were the first African-American councilmen voted.
Mention them all, that's right.
Let him have his moment.
No, I got more than one moment. You know, I was just saying for him, because I know you guys have been around 20 years, I think that's a long time to be around, actually, but at the end of the day, I'm a black person, I don't need a single person in here to stand up for me or to have anybody else to put in their two cent when they should have said that from the beginning. We would have even liked it if they would have said it at the, at that history thing. I'm just letting you know how the black community is perceiving that. Not because he's your friend. Yes, he's probably did a great, just like yourself, you've done a lot, so when we have white history month, I'm gonna make sure that you get recognized.
Okay, guys.
Thank you.
That's enough. Thank you very much.
I didn't want it to be enough, it wasn't an argument.
Well, I know, let's move on. Any other new business before us?
I'd just like to say one thing to Leonard about the event last week. The reason why no elected officials were acknowledged is because the people that were coming to the event specifically said, if we, if it becomes a political event, we're not buying tables.
And I appreciate that, so next time when they tell you...
That's the reason why, and Kelly, you can call Judy Dunlap, she will tell you the same thing. So anybody, so if you have any questions, call people like Judy Dunlap, President of the Gary School, of the Maryville School Corporation School Board. Her words exactly to me were, if you're gonna talk politics at this meeting, we're not gonna buy a table.
Sure, and she bought a table. Sure, she bought a table and didn't even show up, so, but you got Kelly here.
Well, she may have said that, but I don't think it's, I don't think Richard, she meant, nor do I perceive it to be politics to acknowledge black history, black history in Maryville without acknowledging the people who broke the barriers for the first time in 50 years.
Call her, and I had a conversation with her this morning. It's not for debate, call her, have a conversation and then see what she said.
Okay.
That's what I asked you to do. Because I know exactly what she told me, and I know that there were other people and businesses that said the identical same thing.
Well, I won't show up again when we have people paying for things. They can dictate, and I paid myself, I never said we don't want to talk about politics. So people don't get a chance, just because you buy a table, to say that we shouldn't be doing certain things. Sorry, Kelly, I stand. Mr. President, can we move on?
Any old business before us tonight?
Neither of us, neither am I. It's not political.
Public comment? Any public comment tonight? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And thanks again for your patience tonight, we had a pretty long agenda.
Good evening, my name is Ursula Peppers, I live at 1201 West 56th Avenue. I just wanted to say, I wasn't at the Black History Program, I would have loved to have gone, but the tickets were a little pricey and was it just for corporations buying tables or was it for our community to come and celebrate or something for us to partake in? Because I'm sure every resident, $75 is a lot of money for a dinner that's not like a five-star or gourmet meal. $75 is a lot of money. And I have a great job, so it's not the problem of that, it's just a lot of money. So if we have another one in the future, can we make it so that the people of the community can afford to come? Not just businesses, I would have loved, this is where I live, I would have loved to come to something like that, but I don't want to just come by myself if my neighbors can't come or if we just all can't. There's a price where we all could afford to come, but $75 is quite a bit. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. First, Sheila, I want to know, have you had an opportunity to fill your office manager position? Because it looks like you got a lot on your sheet. Okay, that's an inside joke. But second, to, as an African-American, I will say this, I would like to differentiate the politics from the history. And not just our race, but I would love to partake in any future boards that are looking to, especially as we highlight diversity for our town, that we do that in a manner that is inclusive, of having that opportunity to learn about the different cultures, to learn about the different races that are here, and to also celebrate the history that we have, regardless of what culture it is. It is something that is worth celebrating and honoring, and I don't think, I think there's a way to be able to remove the politics of it because it's facts when it comes to who was the first and the barriers that were broken. All of those trailblazers need to be celebrated in a manner because they did serve as a history point to this town and it shows how we're moving forward. Not just for African-Americans, but to also celebrate all of the different cultures that we have. It's an opportunity for us to learn about the different cultures. I am African-American, but there's a lot of other races that are out there, I would love to learn more culture about, and I think that's a huge area of opportunity for us. Also, with regards to all of the ordinances, and this may be for you, Attorney Svetinoff, the fees of those ordinances, from the time that those ordinances are passed, how quickly will they be implemented as far as code enforcement, as well as those tickets turned in and making sure that the court system is updated with those fees? That we have enough time to get that stuff sent to the state so they can then enter it into the system? So have the fees as well, are they remaining the same? Have they changed?
Well, I think they've been added, specifically, let's take the mailbox ordinance that we were talking about tonight, those have been added to that ordinance.
Okay.
So I'll get with Pat, we're gonna have to run a publication on those establishment of fees.
Okay.
Then after that, after that ordinance has complied with Indiana code, then we'll release it over to you to deal with the state on setting those in Odyssey or whatever, whatever system you're dealing with now.
Okay, that would be most helpful. And then one other ordinance, ordinance 12-60 with regards to load limits, I think maybe we would probably benefit in meeting, not just with the police department, but with the code, well, that's you guys, not code enforcement, to have a clear understanding when you talk about being on private property versus on the street with some of those load limit violations. I know that there is some discrepancies with regards to that interpretation, meaning going on to the properties of the hotels when you have those semis that are parked. Some officers I know, just in general conversation, was trying to figure out some thought that that's left up to code enforcement, but now there's something that we can all at least get on the same page about to better be able to educate all of the officers on that. Would be something we would like to be able to move forward with as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dr. Alicia Gustafson, I own Maryville Animal Hospital at 6226 Cleveland Street. I do, I'm not a resident of Maryville, Indiana, so is that okay, that I can still talk?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm really here to advocate for the dire need of animal control. I'm also here to offer my assistance as needed, put my name out there that, you know, I'm willing to help with any plans or discussions that are moving forward with this. Anyone who rescues animals knows this is not a linear process. You rescue an animal, that is of your own responsibility. In Maryville, as the owner of this clinic for the last five years, I have been bombarded with abandoned animals, tied to my gates, left out there, getting injured. As recently as Thanksgiving, there was a number of people who were trying to rescue a German shepherd that was just wandering the streets of Taft, right down the middle of Taft Street. And the police did not respond to my calls for help, neither did animal control. Me and several other citizens attempted to catch this animal, could not do it, he was aggressive and lunging at us, so I went back into my clinic, I said, he doesn't want to be helped, we're not gonna help him. When I came out of the clinic about an hour later, there were two Maryville Police Departments and a Lake County Sheriff attempting to collect this pet. So I walked out there with my rabies poles and we were able to get this pet to a safe place. That safe place ended up being my business and I had zero help from any animal control or Maryville Police Department. Had that pet not had a tag on it, that pet would have been euthanized, because I cannot afford to care for every unwanted animal in Maryville, Indiana. This is a, not a new animal control officer problem. I know Barb, I know Barb personally, I know that recently she has been villainized on various social media posts and on regular media, and I don't think that's appropriate, that it's suggestive that this is an individual problem. And it is not Barb's fault that animal control is in the situation that it is in. As the sole animal control officer, she's not had the resources to be an effective animal control officer. She has nowhere to take these pets, and she has personally told me, and so has the Maryville Police Department, if an animal that was abandoned on my property is to be just let go. So I am to let the potentially aggressive, potentially public safety issued pet back out onto the streets of Maryville, and that is just not a valid solution. Again, we need a safe place for these animals to be taken, we need to work together as a community to assist in the reduction of the animals needing assistance. This is, again, a community issue, we need to collaborate. I heard you speak earlier about rescues and shelters in the area to get these pets to the best facility for rehoming. Finally, we need to increase the education of the community. You had mentioned workshops, I think that's a great idea too, to advocate for, spaying and neutering your pets, you know, keeping them up to date on vaccinations, proper handling of them, and potentially offering a low-cost solution to those who cannot afford standard veterinary care. There are communities that are excelling at this. I've reached out to a few of them to try and get their plan on what they do, maybe I can share that with you guys if...
Sure.
They're busy, but if any of them reach out to me, I will share that information. Unfortunately, most of them have a dedicated shelter. If we build a shelter, we're gonna fill it up in days if we don't have a plan for what we're gonna do with these animals afterwards. So I just wanted to introduce myself, express my concerns and state I'm willing to assist in any way that I can, because again, it's a community issue. It's not a, not just animal control or the town of Maryville.
If you can stay after for a couple of minutes, you can meet your new best friend, his name is Costa Nusis.
I think we've talked on the phone before, so, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate the help. And we're looking for help on this issue from anywhere, believe me.
Good evening. Council, I'm here for communication with you and let you know how I feel about something that I witnessed. In the month of January of 2023, I witnessed a few police cars near my home. I looked to see what was going on and noticed a black dog running from two policemen. The dog looked large, around 70 pounds or more, and he looked malnourished, his side bones were showing. He also mostly was in fear of the officers. I went outside and looked past a vehicle and seen Officer Fields, a police officer Fields, Maryville Police Officer, lying over the dog with his arm over the dog's head and speaking gently and calm and trying to calm the dog down. Officer Fields' partner, Officer Best, was doing what Officer Fields was asked to do and the two asked to call for animal control van, and when the control, animal control van come, that they would have all the tools needed to handle this big dog. And Officer Field was still on this dog. Officer Fields was also bitten by this dog. And for him, for him to be bitten by this dog and have a composure that he had of being very, very compassionate to this dog, he was talking to this animal and calmed the animal down until the van came with the tools that they needed to take the dog and put him in the van. So I'm here today to tell you what a commendable service these three police officers is, the police officer that brought the van and the two police officers that were with the dog specifically, laying on the dog was Officer Fields, the one that got bit. The dog didn't hurt, even though this dog was a noticeable threat to them in my neighborhood, they settled him down. I thought Officer Field was a special person because of being bitten by this dog and had a compassion and kept his composure in a dangerous situation. My compliments to the police department. And to these fellows here. And I request that these men be given a letter of commendation for doing exemplary services.
Andy, please state your name and address for the record, I don't think you did that. We know who you are.
My name is Andrew Silvestowitz, my address is 5825 Tany Place, Maryville, Indiana.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to finish up with your new animal control officer. You let go of Barbara for whatever reason, but we appointed her right there on a dius in 2001. As you know, some of you are around here, we had groups of dogs running around neighborhoods. There were dogs in a pack. We had about three packs of dogs, she took care of them. We had a problem with snakes in the Meadowdale area between the north part of our town and the apartment buildings in Gary. Not just a few snakes, there were hundreds of snakes in that area, in the playground. Kids couldn't go in the backyard and play. She did a lot, and I'd like for her to be also complimented with some type of sheet of paper. With her 22 years' experience, she had no problems, no repriments, nothing. She had a good upbringing, her father was a policeman in East Chicago for 35 years, and she was brought up in a policeman's home, so she has got to be dutiful and knows what to do and the standards that she has to operate by. So that's about all I have to say. And thank you, and thank you, Chief, and thank you, your men, please. Any questions?
We have another public comment.
Ryan Massarch, 201 East 68th Place. I'd like to remind Town Council that spending TIF zone money outside of a TIF zone is inconsistent with and in violation of state law. TIF zones money should be spent within each specific TIF zone. You know, along, in conjunction with that, 1% food and beverage tax, most people who live in Maryville, when they go out to eat, they're going to be going out to eat in Maryville. Most people, unless there's a specific reason, are not gonna be going to Hobart or Sherrville or Highland to go out to eat. It is absolutely unrealistic to think that people who are on fixed incomes don't go out to Subway or McDonald's or whatnot to get a meal. You will be taxing them as well. Why are we taxing them? Oh, because we misspend and misallocate money on a regular. We have certain departments like animal... We have certain departments like animal control and the police department and possibly the fire department that could use funds that don't have the funds. They don't have the resources they need. However, we're taking loans out to build electric substations for businesses that can well afford it. Why? This block grant, I would like to suggest that we start using that money to build an animal shelter and start taking this animal control situation a little bit more serious. There have been last meeting and this meeting where people have brought this up. It's a problem, we need to take care of the problem. And we need to start thinking about taking care of the problem and working together. And maybe this block grant money could be seed to start that and improve the program. Thank you.
To the honorable committee members that are present, my name is Larry Hare. My wife is here with me, her name is Melissa Hare. I would like to take a brief opportunity to verbally express our appreciation and our gratitude to Ms. Barbara Bregger. We want to thank her for offering her professional guidance, unwavering support, and her helpful assistance. We would like to express and give our verbal appreciation to her and share with this honorable committee in the way that she handled our concerns. My wife and I lived in Maryville for the last, for the past thirty years. And we have recently done business with Mrs. Bregger. Mrs. Bregger has always given one hundred percent support in handling our issues. She has called us with pertinent information. She's been fair, consistent, and very reliable in giving us the proper course of action to take, the proper path to follow. And we truly appreciate everything that she's done. We found her words to be true and very informative. Her conversation solidified a path for us to follow to get the issues resolved. We just want to offer this brief, these brief words to thank her for all that she's done for us. And we wanted to share these compliments with this honorable committee. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Berger, that's spelled with two Es, and I live at sixty-nine forty-five Broadway. I've been there since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been a Maryville resident since nineteen sixty-six. And I gave a whole list of things to the chief today that are just going on in my neighborhood. And the one thing I'd like to see an ordinance passed on, and it's not on that list, is obnoxious lighting. Sixty-six eighty Broadway, which is Fifth Third Bank, has put eight giant LED panels the size of this podium on their building, shining out into the neighborhood. When you leave this meeting, I beg of you to drive north on Broadway and check it out. You'll be blinded by the light leaving that property. There are codes and standards for lighting, and they're breaking them all. I went in and talked to the manager, and she said she was gonna talk to the maintenance folks. And they must think I'm a joke because they haven't done anything. Those platforms are mounted on a hinge. They're mounted ninety degrees on the building. If they were to point them down slightly, they wouldn't bleed into the neighborhood. I live at sixty-nine forty-five Broadway, and the light is coming down the road bright enough for me to do hand puppets on my bedroom wall. Wow. From the light shining from the bank property. So I would like to see that as an ordinance or demuncided for obnoxious lighting. There are codes and standards, and they're not within that code and standard whatsoever. So that's the one thing I'd like to bring to your attention. And I want to thank you all for your time and your diligence and your hard work. And one last thing, that doesn't really mean anything at all. That guy up there, this guy right here, the first town board president is my father-in-law.
Oh, great.
I was married to his third daughter.
Okay.
That's all I got, thanks.
Moving on to announcements tonight, next council meeting is March fourteenth. We will have the workshop on the seventh, and we'll get out notifications. Mr. Span, did you have something?
Yes. I take my pets to the animal control, and I know the ladies that are here. And they do a wonderful job for dogs, cats. And it's amazing when you get your home pet hurt and you don't know what to do with it, you know? And a lot of people actually leave their dogs right over there tied to their pets. And every time I take my dog over there for treatment or whatever, I try to leave a deposit, a little something for the other animals. And like I say, I just want to let you know, these are some wonderful people.
Great, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. That money you was gonna donate for me? Give it to them.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All the fever.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.